Good evening. I'd like to call the Transportation and Road Improvement Committee for the Village of Hoffman Estates for this Monday, February 10th, 2025. May we have a roll call, please?
Chairperson Arnett.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Caneen.
Present.
Trustee Stanton.
Present.
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Trustee Newell.
Present.
Trustee Palafas.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present.
Thank you. We do have a quorum. I can have a motion for approval of minutes for the Transportation and Road Improvement for January 13th, 2025.
So moved. A second.
Anybody have any questions? additions, solutions, corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The motion has been passed. Anybody have a public comment for this committee for tonight's meeting? Seeing none, we will move on to reports for information only. Transportation Division Monthly Report. Anything to add? Thank you, Jennifer.
Got a question.
Trustee Stanton.
Jen, you know, we're hearing about these grants that are being possibly taken away. How is that going to affect us, if at all?
So far, we've been able to continue and proceed with what we've received, but we're monitoring it and we'll make sure and report if we hear otherwise.
Okay, thank you.
The only other thing that we've seen-
...over the last several years and it truly brought joy to hundreds of people in the community. We appreciate you being a part of it. The collection continues through Wednesday. Cards may be dropped off at Village Hall in the lobby. You can also arrange for pickup of cards by calling Jen Georgievic at 847-781-2610. We have some activity last week. Last Tuesday, we had our management team meeting and attended 15 St. Humbert's Principal and some of the folks came in to donate cards for Operation Love that the kids have put together. Then we had our Celtic Fest Commission meeting later that afternoon. Wednesday, the 5th, I attended the municipal conference executive board meeting. Thursday, the 6th, we had the holiday 4th of July Commission. In the afternoon, in the morning, there was the Commercial Real Estate Update at the Now Arena. It was arranged by Kevin Kramer. And Friday, the 7th, I participated in the Government Relations Committee meeting for the chamber. At 4:00 PM, Cook County Assessor Fritz Kegy came in to visit because all of our townships are being reassessed. Always an exciting time. That's all I got.
Thank you. I do see we have a special guest in the back of the room. Is that related to one of our-
Oh.
Well, she's a special guest.
She looks busy.
Welcome to our young guest back in the back of the room who is very busy at this moment. I see nothing in items in review or anything in item. May I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We are adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the Planning, Building and Zoning Committee for the Village of Hoffman Estates on this February 10th, 2025. May we have a roll call, please?
Chairperson Stanton.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Arnett.
Present.
Trustee Caneen.
Present.
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Trustee Newell.
Present.
Trustee Palafas.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present.
We do have a quorum. Looking for approval of the minutes of Planning, Building and Zoning Committee for the 13th of January of 2025. So moved.
A second.
Thank you. Anybody notice any corrections or deletions that need to be made? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Looking for approval of the minutes of January 20th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Anybody notice any corrections or deletions need to be made in those minutes? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the ayes have it. They are approved. Public comment. Anybody wish to address us on anything that's pertinent to the Planning, Building and Zoning Committee? Okay, we'll move on to new business. We have three items. First is authorization to waive formal bidding and award a contract to Altogether of Evanston, Illinois for comprehensive plan, public engagement and graphic design support in an amount not to exceed $110,500, I believe that's $60, with village manager to approve change orders in an amount not to exceed $30,000 as needed.
Motion approved. Second.
Eric, you want to explain that or...? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're okay.
Phil, go ahead.
Um, cool. So, the item before you tonight is for a contract for Altogether, who are a planning and design firm who specialize in public engagement and placemaking, to provide some support for what will be a mostly in-house comprehensive planning plan right now. All of those will interact and coordinate with this one document that really guides the vision for the village over the long term. It gives us the legal authority for the land use decisions that all of you have to make on a regular basis. And modern comprehensive plans, as opposed to the types of plans the village has dealt with before, go a little bit further than that. They give us guidance for our capital improvement program, for the budget. They tell department heads what their priorities should be when they're doing their annual work planning. And they're great communication tools. The image I have on the slide is an example of an implementation update from the city of Greensboro in North Carolina, who are really using the ideas that came out of their comprehensive planning process to inform all of their communications moving forward. So that there's a great deal of two-way communication with the residents on how that city is doing and meeting its goals. You'll hear me talk a bit about strategic plans and comprehensive plans tonight. I'm not expecting you to read all of that verbatim. You'll get a copy of these slides if you'd like to see them, but we're trying to combine those two processes. Many of you will have gone through the strategic planning process previously. Many of you will have gone through our comprehensive planning process previously too. Strategic plans at a high level are very inward-looking documents. They look at the organization itself. And it's all about controlling what we can control. A comprehensive planning document looks a lot more broadly. It looks more externally. And we can't necessarily control everything that we put forth in a comprehensive plan. There's a lot of market factors and other external factors. But that's more of our attempt to guide those and lay out what the village wants to see happen. I want you to think back to the year 2007. The first iPhone was announced. We all switched from Windows XP to Windows Vista. The words hashtag and tweet were included in the dictionary for the first time ever. And Umbrella was the number-two-selling song that year while Spider-Man 3, the Tobey Maguire version, not the other two trilogies that we've seen since then, was the number-one movie at the box office. So that's the year 2007. That's also the year that we last did a comprehensive plan. And that comprehensive plan was reactive in a lot of ways to the proposal of the Star Line, which I'm sure we all love riding the train to the Hoffman Estate Station every single day, right? No? Okay. So that didn't happen, right? So we did not get the Star Line. And so a lot of the assumptions in that plan ended up being wrong just because this huge effort that we were right to respond to at the time did not come to fruition. And so we're left with this plan that doesn't quite meet our needs anymore and it needs updating. The other thing you'll notice when you look at the 2007 plan is if you look at that table of contents that I posted there, what the older-style plans did, they looked at every single type of land use on a one-by-one basis and each of them got their own chapter. And you considered them in this kind of vacuum. And we've all realized now that that isn't quite how the world works, right? All of these different uses interact with each other and they all come together to make towns and villages and communities and places. And so that style of planning has fallen out of favor. If you think back to the strategic plan that we did in partnership with NIU that laid out a bunch of key strategic priority areas, my take on that is everything was labeled as a priority and we all know what happens when everything is a priority. Nothing is a priority. So we really see an opportunity here to bring in some of those strategic planning efforts, update them and tie the internal to the external and focus on how our organization will function in making Hoffman Estates a great place to be. I mentioned that there's a new way of doing things. The example I've given you here is from Nassau County in Florida. They're about at the end of their process. What modern plans do, what contemporary plans do, is they do similar work to how we would have done it in 2007, but they come up with these, some people call them pillars, some people call them big ideas. But the big key focus areas that take into account a lot of different visions and thoughts. A lot of it is based on good community engagement. A lot of it is based on guidance and strategic direction set by elected officials such as yourselves. But if you look at Nassau County, you know, they kind of set these up into housing, livability, opportunity. Greensboro, North Carolina, that I showed you before, they won the national award in 2022. So that plan that looked at six big ideas. More close-to-home, Glencoe just adopted theirs about a month ago. Similarly, they have five or six big ideas that they've adopted that take these previously very siloed ideas that we used to look at in planning and brought them together. I think the example I gave you in the memo is, you know, housing policy doesn't exist in a vacuum. Our housing policy really impacts our economic development. It really impacts our transportation. It really impacts our infrastructure planning. I think we talked a little bit about that when we did the housing study and we looked at how multifamily development has a much different impact on the infrastructure bottom line as a single-family development, right? I'm sure we're all super familiar with the dry academia behind comprehensive planning. Raise your hands if you have a signed copy of the book. Okay. I prefer my diagram. A good comprehensive plan does three simple things. It tells us where we are. It asks us where we want to go. And it tells us how we're going to get there. And that is it in a nutshell. So the process that we are proposing is a three-step process that looks at those three things. Where are we now? What are our existing conditions? What's our demographics? Where do we want to go? What is our vision for the village? And then how do we get there? What are the action steps, both long-term and short-term, that we can take to fulfill those goals and become that Hoffman Estates that you all want us to be? We'll be talking a lot about this. This is a big undertaking. I can't undersell that. And I cannot oversell it either. But there's roles for you all. You know, I think you'll remember about a year or so ago, I stood in front of you talking about the Hoffman in Motion Plan and how I was giving you all postcards and I needed you to be those champions out in the community and you came through. We'll be doing that kind of thing again, but we'll also be looking at you for more pointed direction and talking more about these visions and values that we hold as a community. Similarly, our staff are going to have a big role in the process too as they look for those technical expertise and ideas as to how we can shape our service delivery as a service organization. And the contract before you tonight is probably the biggest piece of it all is that public engagement. A really good comprehensive plan does a lot of public engagement. If you look at our 2007 comprehensive plan, we did a couple open houses and a survey. If you look at Greensboro, much bigger city, so we're not pitching anywhere near these numbers. They did 150 events. Again, much bigger city, so definitely not an apples-to-apples comparison. But still, I think over the past year or so of undertaking the Hoffman in Motion Transportation Plan, we've really reimagined our relationship with the community and how we do public engagement. And we've seen dividends. You know, you look at the numbers, over 700-plus people across two workshops, 450 survey responses, which was about twice the number we were anticipating, 150-plus at the different pop-up events that we went to. And that first wave of public engagement was about a six-to-seven-month-long process. So we have the experience now and we've also built those relationships with the community that they've come to expect that we will go out there and talk to them about what they're experiencing and what their hopes and ideas are. So to that end, the item in front of you, Altogether, like I said, are a planning and design firm who specialize in this work. They were the subconsultant, they still are the subconsultant, on that transportation plan, specifically focusing on these public engagement items that we knew would be so important to that. And we've had a great relationship with them. They've made wonderful relationships with community leaders. They've done a great job of supporting our communication staff and getting out the word about the work we're doing. And so even though this is going to be an in-house plan, and by that I mean I will be writing the thing, there is an opportunity to provide some assistance where we don't necessarily have the capacity, order at these consultants with real expertise in these areas. I won't give you the sales pitch on them necessarily, but these are the kind of five key ideas around what public engagement is and what it does. It's good for transparency, so it creates that meaningful relationship between us and our residents, right? It helps us get out there and have these very real conversations at all different levels of the process and throughout, right? In terms of the specific tasks that we're looking to get some support on from this firm, obviously the actual public engagement plan itself, that is what they are the experts in. They will also provide some staffing support at those events, which they have done throughout the Hoffman in Motion process. The other interesting thing that we're looking for some support with is graphic design. So they are designers as well as planners. And with Hoffman in Motion, they've done all the branding, all the postcards, all the graphics you've seen in the final document itself. And they're very, very talented at that. And that can take a lot of time if you are not a designer by trade, which I am not. And so as part of this contract, they would be supporting us by designing the documents that village staff would then be writing in the actual text itself within. And that helps us keep a uniform look, a professional look to everything that we deliver to you and to the public. In terms of timeline, we only wanted to really look at this Wave 1. So Wave 1 is the initial engagement wave, where we really go to the public with a very open mind to try and get a sense of what the big ideas, the pillars out there could possibly be. There are some communities right now going through comprehensive planning process who already kind of have a solid idea of what that might be. They already have their problem areas in town. They have the long abandoned shopping centers. And they have all of that kind of, they have a good sense of that. We want to go in with a little bit more of an open mind and a more open conversation with the public as we go through this process. So Wave 1 will give us the opportunity to do that. And then after that is when we'll take all of that information back and we'll figure out what messaging we take out for Wave 2 to help refine that. During all of this, this is just the public engagement. We'll be doing work at a staff level simultaneously on getting the demographic data compiled, on looking at the existing conditions, on figuring out some of the big land use-specific questions that we might have. So that's everything in terms of the contract. Happy to take any questions.
Okay. I have a couple of questions, but one comment to start out with. You're talking about needs and desires. I have a bunch of neighbors who are bike riders that want to know when you're going to grill cheeseburgers again. So if you incorporate that into this somewhere, they'd be even more happy.
Yep. Other duties as assigned.
Yeah. On a more serious note, when you engage the community or have in the past, how do you navigate that? Because really, in our interactions, or at least mine, we're almost like three micro-communities. The north one, something different than the central. Both want something very different from the west. How do you plan to like collate that or?
Yeah. Step one is accepting that. So, you know, in terms of how we've adopted and moved on from the current 2007 comprehensive plan, we did those smaller, more focused sub-area plans. We did the west area plan. We did the Barrington I-90 plan. With Hoffman in Motion, we're in that draft plan review stage right now. Although we are looking at the village in totality, we're also splitting them up into those very specific sub-areas and recognizing that they each have different needs. The approach as proposed by Altogether mirrors what we've done with Hoffman in Motion. So as well as a big event at the end of each wave, like you saw with the summer hang over at Southridge Park, we also have room in that budget and in that plan to do these smaller pop-up events. And like we did with Hoffman in Motion, one of them was grilling cheeseburgers up by Crank Revolution and that attracted a lot of folks from the north. One of them was out west where we went to Summer Sounds on the Green. We've been to Bellworks. So that's built into this too, to make sure we're covering each of the three distinct areas. And although, you know, at one point I have to sit down and analyze and synthesize for the whole village, I think there's room in this process to look at each of those areas as the distinct areas they are.
All right. Good luck on that. It'll be fun to watch.
Any other questions?
I was going to say, just for the record, when we got elected in 2007, I think I caught the end of some of those meetings and Rod Whitmar? Like, published it and then like retired like the next week, remember? He's like, this is it. It's the last thing I'm doing. I'm out of here. So, yeah, it's been a long time. I mean, 18 years since we've done that one. So.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Great. Thank you.
Second is the approval of an incentive agreement between the Village of Hoffman Estates and Compass Data Centers ORD. I don't know if that's a one or an i.
That's a one.
That's a one, okay. LLC for the Compass Data Center property located at 5400-5600 Trillium Boulevard, formerly 3333 whatever, Beverly Road.
Motion approved. Second.
Okay. Any questions? Kevin, you want to discuss anything?
Sure, I can certainly highlight it. Or if there's questions, I can answer questions. Maybe just real quick, I'll highlight. The site plan process to approve these five data center buildings has proceeded to planning and zoning and will come before the board next Monday. So staff was working with Corporation Counsel to draft this agreement before you. Just a couple of, maybe of the sections to highlight specifically to have it on record. But for this incentive, the project would not occur. The two main points in here are the village agreeing to consider an ordinance supporting the Cook County Class 6B application that they'll have for all five buildings. And the one ordinance will support all five of those applications. And then the other part is Compass agreeing to provide a community investment of $800,000 per building as they, that they would pay at the time of the final certificate of occupancy. And then just lastly, the agreement runs with the land. So if they do ever sell to anybody, that would all still be in place.
Okay. Any other questions on that? All right. Since there's a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. And third and last of the new business items is approval of an ordinance supporting the Cook County Class 6B classification for property tax assessment purposes for Compass Data Centers ORD 1 LLC, Compass Data Centers 1A ORD LLC, Compass Data Centers 1B ORD LLC and Compass Data Centers 1C ORD LLC for the proposed data centers to be located at 5400 to 5600 Trillium Boulevard, formerly 3333 Beverly Road.
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions on that? Trustee Palafas.
Just one comment. Thanks for all the work that went into this. I know it was quite a bit. And thank you to Compass for your patience. I know some of the planning and zoning meetings were edgy and had some discussions with some of those folks. And I'm like, you realize this is something we really, really want. So we appreciate that hanging in there with us. So, yeah, yeah.
Trustee Mills?
Now, this is for all the buildings that are going to go up.
Correct.
Is there any problem with passing this now for all five buildings, considering the timeframes involved?
Correct. So Compass can't submit until within 12 months of when they would start construction to the county. So that's why the three entities are listed on here for buildings 1 through 3. I have their undated future applications for 4 and 5 here that I'll include on the board meeting next week. Just to make sure Cook County knows we are supporting all five of them whenever they do come in. Oftentimes what will happen is somebody at the county will call me and say, "Hey, do you guys still support this kind of thing?" And I'll say, yes, that was the intention of both the ordinance along with, at the meeting, that the board intended to support all five, even if it's two years from now.
Okay, so the clock doesn't start until the actual building is completed?
For their 6B assessment part. They're able to get that assessment classification when they're 60% occupied.
Okay.
So that's when their 12-year clock starts.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure the 12-year clock didn't start now with the first building.
Correct.
It wouldn't make any sense then for the others yet.
They have to apply per building because, but for that incentive, the project won't happen, right? So they need to apply. And after they get it up and built, when it's 60% occupied, then they go to the assessor to say, here, we're 60% occupied. Please reclassify us to that 6B.
Okay, and start the clock now. Okay, thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it and it is approved. We have three reports. Planning Division Monthly Report, Code Enforcement Division Monthly Report and Economic Development and Tourism Monthly Report. Anybody have any questions on those? I do have one question, I guess, with the Planning Division Monthly Report. I have a young lady who's at BMO Harris Bank on Higgins. She keeps asking me about coffee and when we're going to have new establishments closer to her. And I guess the question is, what about scooters? How long is that going to be before it's coming up for us?
There are some, you're talking about it, the Rozelle Higgins. I don't know if we have an exact timeframe. There were some delays from the contractor slash developer in completing certain requirements and paperwork for the, is it FEMA?
Correct.
And the village took that process over recently to make sure that paperwork was revised and completed in a timely fashion. That's related to floodplain. So we're still working through that, but until that is addressed, we are unable to process any permits, correct, for any type of development in that area. So we're still working with FEMA to try to get those issues and matters regarding to the floodplain in that area resolved. So I guess the next time you go back to the bank, I'm trying to give you an answer. I don't have an exact timeline and I would, I wouldn't want to give you one because I wouldn't want to be on the wrong side of that. So certainly when we get additional information and those issues become the, solving those issues get into greater focus, we can certainly advise the board. But I don't have a timeline yet. And Kevin and Jenny, if I missed something, let me know.
No, there's not a timeline. I would just say, keep going to McDonald's next door for your coffee for now for the next foreseeable future.
Well, she's not close to McDonald's there.
Well, not on the Rozelle one?
Actually, they wanted a coffee shop next door to them instead of a tire store.
Across from the high school.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Okay.
Sometimes they offer complimentary coffee in the tire store. It may not be that it's great she's looking for.
Anybody else? Any, yes, Anna?
I just wanted to comment in the pack. It was the annual report for the economic development and it was a really nice report, a lot of work. So thank you, everyone, whoever put everything together on it. It was amazing report, really. So, thank you.
And I'll just say that is on our website now. So if you wanted to share a link with your friends and neighbors, you can. It's on the economic development page.
Trustee Palafas.
Congratulations on your event. The CRE, I heard it was a smash.
Thanks.
Despite an ice storm.
We had an ice storm. I think that kept a few people away, but thank you all for your support. And we ended up getting just over 80, I think I was counting.
Nice.
Which is a 15% increase from last year. So.
Good number, yeah.
It certainly looked more crowded than it was last year, yeah.
Anybody else with any other issues or questions or anything? Okay, those three reports will be received and filed. President's report.
Yeah, just one item I neglected to mention that I attended the orientation meeting for the National League of Cities Transportation Infrastructure Meeting. I'm on the steering committee as reappointed, so they're already at work. Thanks. That's it.
Okay. We have no items in review or other, so looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it and we are adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the General Administration and Personnel Committee meeting for February 10th, 2025. Could I please get a roll call?
Excuse me. Chairperson Caneen.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Stanton.
Present.
Trustee Arnett.
Present.
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Trustee Newell.
Present.
Trustee Palafas.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present.
Okay, we have a quorum. Item two, approval of the minutes. Could I get a motion for the approval of the General Administration and Personnel Committee meeting minutes for-
So moved.
Second.
I didn't even get to say that.
I know that.
Am I a little slow here? Any changes, corrections or additions to those minutes? Okay. Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries. Item three, public comment. Any public out there need to comment? Nope. No old business, under no business. Item A, approval of a professional services agreement for executive leadership development and coaching with SRSD Consulting LLC in an amount not to exceed $78,600.
So moved.
Second. Okay, Eric?
Yeah, uh, just real quick, uh, the staff memo is fairly self-explanatory, but um, on a high level municipalities are very good at developing their employees as it relates to technical training for each department, each type of employee, whether it's cops, firefighters, uh, accountants, planners, et cetera. We give them the technical skills to be able to do their jobs very well. One area that I've seen throughout my career is doing a better job at the kind of those soft skills. And especially when it gets to the level of uh, department heads, supervisors, et cetera. And really, I know a term, uh, Trustee Palafas and I have talked about the, the EQI over IQ uh, type of concept, right? How do we, how do we lead people? How do we manage people's emotions? How do we look at emotional intelligence in terms of our, our own employees and, and, and how do we grow them from those types of perspectives? So I've actually been working uh, with Sarah Schillerstrom. Uh, Sarah's a former deputy village manager of the Village of Glenview for many years. Uh, she has since left the municipal side and started her own business. You know, her and I have been in conversations about this concept, this emerging leader program. Um, the, the stark reality for our organization is at a department head level, um, you know, we're going to have another wave of retirements. And while succession plans are already in place and I'm very confident with the next uh, group of leaders that uh, will be coming forward, I think I want to give them some additional resources in development in, in some of those concepts that we talked about. So essentially what will be happening is happening. Uh, Ms. Schillerstrom will be coming in. Uh, it's a 14-month program, so this isn't something you're going to knock out in a couple of weeks or you're gonna, gonna try to cram for the test last minute. This is a, a longer cohort uh, where these groups will be meeting on a monthly basis uh, for uh, some education. And then there'll be a series of, of small groups and one-on-one development uh, as well. Uh, professional development coaching uh, at an executive level is something that is really starting to take off on the municipal side uh, that leaders on their own um, aren't expected to figure it out all on their own. And many times the relationship, the leader and their boss, usually me, um, although I can do some of that, uh, it's been found that outside folks coming in, helping develop those um, soft skills with those leaders, it's a nice other person to go to, to talk to, to confide and, and bounce ideas off of, that isn't always your direct supervisor. So um, I'm really excited about this. Uh, Ms. Schillerstrom has been doing this and one of the, started this in one other municipality. Uh, I have been, been able to provide some direct input to her on things that I want to see as well. And she's incorporated into that as her program continues to get uh, refined. Um, and I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Any questions? Uh, Trustee Palafas?
Um, my comment and a question. Uh, my, my comment is I, I think these programs are awesome. Uh, everybody wins. My question is, how do you navigate putting people through this with the hopes that they don't leave within a 12 or 20 more? I know you were gonna ask. I got Karen's question before she.
I already wrote it to him.
Did she? Okay. Well, you could just give me Karen, the answer you gave her, but uh, that they just don't leave and you know, I mean, it's, you, you're essentially building them up for the, the what's next, which might not always be here. So.
You know, I, I, I get the, the, the direct answer to that question. There are no guarantees in life, right? And in this market, this job market right now, where people are getting poached and people are moving at a much um, greater frequency um, than they had before is somewhat unprecedented. Um, and I will always hire the best person for the job, even knowing that there's a possibility that they may leave. Because I'd rather get the best two years out of them, even if they go somewhere else, uh, as opposed to maybe having a lesser candidate. Um, a lot of the folks that I've identified, I've identified 11 individuals. Um, I, I've, my personal feeling is I think a lot of them are here for the long haul, based on conversations I've had with them. Some of them are already identified within succession plans. Um, so it's a great question. I can't guarantee, I can't sit here and tell you that some, someone may come with a great offer and they have to go. Maybe circumstances in their life change. I, I can't predict that. But I'm pretty comfortable with the people we've identified and, and their ability to hopefully stay here for a longer term.
Cool. Thank you. I get at least three in this room that, you know, would get my vote. So.
Trustee Mills?
Well, one benefit of this program too, in my mind, and as you know, I had sent you that same question.
You did.
Um, it's a great opportunity for us to be able to promote from within. And that's always better than bringing in outsiders at times because they're more familiar with the procedures and the, the town and everything else. So there are a lot of good benefits for this too.
I was just going to say that uh, you know, the candidates that are selected, obviously you have confidence that they're in for the long haul. But also, like in the fire department, the police department, you know, by initiating these programs, I believe that it gives them hope that they will continue to move forward within the village and eventually, you know, attain maybe being a director, something within our community.
Yeah, I mean, this, my hope is that this would be wave one and then um, in next year, I'm coming back with a second wave that we've, you know, we keep trying to do this and build those folks up. To, for me though, the immediacy of doing this and looking into our own horizon with again, retirements and other things is trying to get some of these other folks in play right away. But it'd be nice to continue to do this on a going forward basis.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, we do have a motion in a second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, item six, reports uh, will mark received and filed, the cable TV monthly report and the human resources management monthly report. Any questions on any of those reports? Bearing none. Uh, Mr. President, do you have anything to add to your report?
Nothing else. Thank you.
What? Sorry, I was supposed to mention the uh, deferred Legislative and Operations and Outreach Monthly Report.
Motion approved. Second.
There's no report.
Oh, oh. To defer. Motion to defer.
Okay, motion a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, and uh, there's no items in review and no, nothing in others, so I'll ask for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Meeting has ended.